Conference of the City Council has incorporated the annual meeting notice in 2014, which was filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2013, sent to the Star-Ledger, Home News Tribune, all entities, lines and provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey, Road Call List.
Here.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine. Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Sedenya.
Here.
Councilman Gorman.
Here.
President Grob.
Here. Each member is present. I'm already a member of the city, of the public wishing to address the council. Seeing now that I've closed that portion of the meeting, we'll move on to new business.
Okay, letter dated August 18, 2014.
Recognize the presence of Councilwoman Patricia Perkins-Augustine.
Thank you, Mr. President. How's everyone?
Hello.
Hope everyone enjoyed their summer. We're back to work.
Yeah.
Well, we've been back to work.
Okay, letter dated August 18, 2014, from His Honor the Mayor, subject to confirmation of your honorable body, I hereby reappoint Ms. Maritza Maceda Elizabeth to serve as a member of the Elizabeth Parking Authority for a new five-year term.
Go on.
Letter dated August 21, 2014, from His Honor the Mayor, requesting that your honorable body consider adopting an ordinance establishing a chapter within the code of the City of Elizabeth, depriming the treatment, discharge, disposal, storage, or other byproducts from natural gas exploration or production using hydraulic fracturing, commonly referred to as fracking waste.
Just so that people at home are not all concerned about this, we haven't had any company in Elizabeth doing fracking since 2010, so the intent of this ordinance is to prevent any future companies from doing any such activity. And we're concerned because the governor has allowed this to happen in other towns and want to make sure that it doesn't happen in our town. So I'm going to ask everyone to read the ordinance that has been prepared by the Law Department, and if everyone's okay with it, it'll be on for first reading next week.
Letter dated August 28, 2014, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to International Salt Company, LLC Summit, Pennsylvania, for the purchasing of rock salt and solar salt in various bulk and bag quantities for snow removal for the Department of Public Works for the period August 12, 2014 through January 31, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $459,130.
Tony, is that the amount we spent last year?
I don't know the exact amount, but it was quite a bit.
Yeah, I don't think.
Too snowfall.
Last year was tough because the temperature never went above 32 degrees.
Yeah.
Could we find out what has been our real expense for the last two years?
Yeah. Well, again, this is an open contract. It's not the amount that's going to be spent.
I know, that's why I'm saying, yeah. I'd like to get an idea of the real number that we've spent in the last two years.
Two years.
So what is a solar salt? I've never heard of that. What is that? You know?
No idea. We'll find out.
Can we ask that question also?
Sure.
It might be the little pebbles on the side of the rock where it's hazardous to the sidewalk and stuff like that. The pebbles.
What do you think?
Solar salt?
What do you think of solar salt?
No, don't hear of it.
What do you see now?
I don't know. I really haven't. I haven't heard of it. There's some little pebbles on it. I don't know your house.
You're talking about, that's Catholic.
That's Catholic.
They would identify it, Catholic. I've never heard of solar.
Tony, you'll get those answers for it?
Yeah, sure.
All right, thank you.
Letter dated August 28, 2014, from the Business Administrator, requesting to amend the resolution dated May 27, 2014, which authorized the commencement of the competitive contracting process for the purposes of selecting a website design company to develop and maintain new websites for the Elizabeth Police Department and Elizabeth Fire Department, specifically to include the maintenance of the City of Elizabeth's official website and official youth website.
So we're just RFPing this?
No, what is it done?
We're just sending out a, because we have a contract process, so we haven't selected something yet, we're just sending it out.
So we don't know the document.
So it's just a request for proposals at this point? Okay.
Letter dated August 28, 2014, from the Business Administrator, requesting to amend the resolution dated July 22, 2014, awarding a contract to Old Dominion Brush Company for the purchase of parts and repairs for road maintenance equipment at a cost not to exceed $250,000, specifically to reflect the correct state contract number 85861. Letter dated August 29, 2014, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to BuyWise Auto Parts, Foxhole, New Jersey, for non OEM auto parts and accessories for light duty vehicles, including but not limited to brakes, gaskets, and towels for various departments for the period August 14, 2014 through August 14, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Go on.
Letter dated August 29, 2014, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Sherwin-Williams Company, Cleveland, Ohio, for paint and related supplies to include but not limited to finishes, solvents, and brushes for various departments for the period July 31, 2014 through July 31, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Go on.
Letter dated August 29, 2014, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Spruce Industries, Rawaway, New Jersey, for the purchase of hand towels and paper related products for various departments for the period July 30, 2014 through July 29, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $60,000. Letter dated August 29, 2014, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Spruce Industries, Rawaway, New Jersey, for the purchase of janitorial supplies for various departments for the period August 4, 2014 through January 21, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $40,000.
Go on.
Letter dated August 29, 2014, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Charles S. Warner, Inc., doing business at S. Warner Ford, Cherry Hill, New Jersey, for the purchase of four 2015 four three fifty four-wheel-drive chassis cabs and options to be added to the city fleet for a total of $192,444.
Are we replacing vehicles?
Mr. President?
Councilman Gorman.
Yeah, I read this, and I don't see why they add it to the fleet. What's the purpose why they add it? Do we not?
I have no idea.
Mr. President?
Hey, Councilwoman.
I said, are you replacing vehicles?
They don't have one in the council.
So, Mr. Tony.
Yeah.
Can we find out, are these new vehicles that we're adding on, or are they replacing them?
It's supposed to be indicated that on the individual letters.
But they did.
But they didn't.
One way or the other.
They didn't say.
And we'll find out.
Yeah, I read it, didn't have it said.
Says to be added to the same fleet, so it looks like brand-new, and then the question is, why do we need four brand-new?
That's the question.
Four-wheel-drive three-fifties, and what do they serve? What purpose do they serve?
Can we hold this?
Sure.
Yeah, we'll get the information for next week.
We'll hold this, Tony.
Mm-hmm.
And while you're looking into that, the last time we had a meeting, I had asked about the need for additional garbage trucks and payloads, which we had, we had one garbage truck throughout the whole city, because the other ones were getting repaired, so I think if we're going to spend some money, I think we need to look at the age of our garbage trucks and our payloads. And replenish that part of the fleet.
Yeah, we, the director was looking into those.
Yeah, I've never got an answer.
I believe they sent the letter now.
Yeah, but we never got an answer of when that's going to happen.
Okay. Letter dated August 29, 2014, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Associated Auto Parts, Linden, New Jersey, for non OEM auto parts and accessories for light duty vehicles, including but not limited to brakes, spark plugs, and filters for various departments for the period August 14, 2014 through August 14, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $250,000.
Go on.
Letter dated August 29, 2014, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to U23 Auto Mall, Butler, New Jersey, for non OEM auto parts and accessories for light duty vehicles, including but not limited to brakes, spark plugs, and filters for various departments for the period August 1, 2014 through August 1, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Is that an all-to-year contract?
In some cases, they have the pedals.
Letter dated August 29, 2014, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to BuyWise Auto Parts, Foxhole, New Jersey, for auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles, including but not limited to brakes, engine parts, and filters for various departments for the period August 1, 2014 through March 17, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $50,000. Letter dated September 2, 2014, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for His Honor the Mayor to execute a agreement between the City of Elizabeth and the Emergency Medical Benevolent Association, International Association of EMTs, and paramedics local eighty-seven.
Any questions? Is this the same, same as the other employees in the town?
I don't believe we have a contract with the, I think this overlaps, 213. I'll have to check, it doesn't, let's see, doesn't actually appear so.
Most of the employees are contracted, it's by June 30th, isn't it, of this year?
Yeah, 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 this is going back retro to prior year, and it's at the, it looks like it's at a higher rate. And it doesn't conform to the non-uniform.
Are we setting the precedent again, it's going to burn us later with the rest of the unions?
I'll have to go back and check the rates on it, and why it's overlapped, but again, this is a separate, separate union.
Do you have any questions on this?
They're looking at six and a half percent here, six and a half percent, which I think is along the same lines, but the overlapping, I'm concerned about the dates that they have down here. I'm going to check the dates and the rates.
I don't have a problem with it.
All right, so just, if you could just get back to it.
Yeah, yeah, I want to check the dates and the overlapping.
Okay, letter dated September 2, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer advising that transfers for the 2014 state fiscal year municipal utility budgets may be necessary. Letter dated September 2, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that temporary emergency appropriations for the 2015 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary. Letter dated September 2, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a capital ordinance authorizing the replacement of three ambulances at $250,000 each totaling $750,000, and the replacement of an ambulance patient in barren in the amount of $100,000 totaling $850,000.
These are old, right?
Yeah. Yeah, old and no service, so I talk to the department.
I just wanted to thank the administration for moving forward and doing this, because this is long overdue.
Oh, yeah, those ambulances.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, let me ask you a question, Tony. We're buying three new ones, okay, are the old ones still going to be in operation?
No, I think they're going to be replaced.
It says they're being scraped.
Yeah. Said they reach their serviceable life.
Second paragraph.
They're terrible.
And will be scrapped. Okay. Conversation I had with the director, they're going to be scrapped.
Yeah.
Soon as we get the news.
Get them worked.
Okay. No problem.
There's no resuscitation.
No resuscitation.
Hang on.
Letter dated September 2, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider the introduction and approval of the 2015 state fiscal year municipal sewer utility budget.
That's what's before us, sir?
Yes, and again, this will be, this will be the introduction of the 2015 budget, which I urge all council to vote for. After it's voted for, it becomes the budget of the City Council, and it could finally adopt it after some scrutiny.
What are we proposing as far as an increase?
No increase for the fiscal year.
Nothing?
No. There'd be a small increase on the county, very small, from the county and Board of Education. There's no increase, there's no increase on the municipal.
So there will be no, zero increase from the city standpoint as far as the plan?
How much is it from the Board of Education?
The what?
Increase from the Board of Education?
Zero, zero this year. It was a seven percent increase last year.
Last year.
And it was a $14 million increase over the last, let's see, five years from the Board of Ed. There's no increase this year.
So there'll be zero increase from us, zero increase from the Board of Ed, county might go up a little bit.
Yeah, a couple bucks, so, you know, I'm rounding when we say no increase, there might be some rounding, plus or minus a couple bucks.
But it'll be steady?
Okay.
No increase means zero. That's random.
Well, when you get to the county and the assessments and that type of thing, yeah, could be a couple bucks, but.
What percentage do you think from the county?
No, very, very small, I think it's like maybe.
Three, four dollars?
Fifteen, twenty-one.
Oh, no, that's a lot. You said little, that's like three to five dollars.
Three to five? You have to call it the county manager.
You rely on the information. Fifteen dollars, a lot.
So that's good news for the folks at home.
Yes, yes, should be good news.
As much as.
A stable one. And what we're looking for is to get, get the budget introduced on September 9th, and then on November 19th, I'm sorry, November 12th, haven't finally adopted.
So somewhere between September 9th and November 12th, we need to have a meeting?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, Yolanda, can we talk about that at our meeting on?
Sixteenth will be the next pre-council meeting.
At our pre-council meeting on the 16th, we'll pick a date to talk about the budget.
Okay.
All right, we don't need to do that today. Is there anybody a little chance to look at it?
Yeah, what we intend to do is to send out, again, the budget document and also the detail by the end of the week.
Right, which we don't.
We'll mail it to you. Right, which we'll mail it to you as soon as we can.
Okay.
Can I send the ball?
My city clerk?
Write me a document.
Chi chi.
Letter dated August 22, 2014, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting September 14 through the 20th, 2014, be designated National Prostate Cancer Week.
I'm going to walk Kellogg Park this way. I don't know. I won't.
Letter dated August 22, 2014, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting to declare October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. On Saturday, October 25, 2014, City of Elizabeth will host a Breast Cancer Awareness Walk at Kellogg Park.
There you go, there you go. Give your breast cancer.
September is for the class.
Letter dated August 22, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting to amend the resolution dated May 13, 2014, awarding a contract to Johnson-Riley Esquire to serve as condemnation counsel, at a cost not to exceed $75,000 for the acquisition of 601 Bond Street, specifically to include the acquisition of both 75, 77 West Jersey Street and 601 Bond Street at a cost not to exceed $75,000 at the hourly rate of $175.
All right, so the number doesn't change? We're just hiring him to do another one?
Letter dated August 29, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to extend the contract between the City of Elizabeth and Streetlight Mission Elizabeth to September 30, 2015, in order to expend funds.
How much funds do they have?
Well, we don't know how much we give them.
That's what I guess my question is. Can we just find out?
But the number hasn't changed, it doesn't seem like.
Right, I guess I know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Find out.
Letter dated August 13, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute a memorandum of understanding and an indemnification agreement to allow the City of Elizabeth to participate in leaf disposal at the conservation center at a cost of $2 per yard for loose and $4 per yard for compacted, not to exceed Letter dated August 21, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached here too, for the boarding of said properties in the amount of $2,102.59.
612 Bond Street's still on this list. Is Reverend ever going to sell that property? Council? We gotta get on this guy, because this has been going on.
Okay.
Been going on for years. That being said, Tony, what's going on with the foreclosure on these tax liens? We were supposed to get a list.
Oh, you did.
We got it.
It's in here?
It's in the pack.
Okay.
Maybe down near the block.
All right.
Letter dated August 21, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached here too, for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of $28,389.29.
Tony, on this list, do you have a list in front?
No, no, I don't have.
There's no such, there's no such thing as 98 Bond Street.
I can probably fix this.
This must be a typo. Maybe it could be 918, anyway.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll check that. Thank you, sir.
Can you see what the real number should be?
Yeah, sure.
Because we don't want to put lien on the wrong property. Or no profit, just 98 because of this.
Letter dated August 13, from the Police Director, requesting to establish no parking signs for the entire length of Harrison Street and Crane Street, as well as stop signs at the intersection of Crane Street and Union Street intersection of Harrison Street and Westfield Avenue.
This is over by Sorento's. Who's ward is that?
That front?
Sedenya?
That's your name?
Sorento's is whose ward?
It's in the.
My ward. That street that runs right along.
The little, that first, Tahoe.
I think they repaid it.
Yeah, they repaid it.
Are you okay with this?
Aye.
Okay.
Letter dated August 20, 2014, from the Police Director, requesting permission to establish handicap parking spaces at the following locations. First Ward, 66 Florida Street.
Put it on.
Second Ward, 960 D-Hart Place.
Okay.
First Ward, 152 Park Place.
Hold.
First Ward, 37 Delaware Street.
Put it on.
Deletions, 208 Geneva Street, 1440 Lexington Place, 847 Tull Street, and 532 Fourth Avenue. Letter dated August 25, 2014, from the Police Director, requesting to rescind the ordinance for a four-way stop at Stiles Street and Chilton Street, and to establish a three-way stop at said location.
Is that what you want, Governor?
No, no, this is in my, this should be Joe's.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Stiles and Chilton.
What is that? Because Chilton's a one-way street.
It should be, yeah, it should be a three-way, it's a one-way street. Okay.
Letter dated August 26, 2014, from the Police Director, requesting to rescind the ordinance establishing a no-stopping standing in the area of 109, 119 Bayway Avenue.
You okay with that?
Yeah, I requested this at one of our meetings, and traffic, you know, to look into it, and they did it rather quick, because this was at our last conference meeting.
Cool.
And with all the changes taking place, now we're relocated, with the bridge going up, I don't think there might be a need, so they looked into it and found that they don't need it, so yes, absolutely.
Letter dated August 27, 2014, from the Police Director, requesting to establish a mid-block crosswalk at 655 Livingston Street and warning signs of pedestrian crossing ahead 100 feet in both directions, as well as stop for pedestrian signs 10 feet from crosswalk in both directions. Additional signs should be placed for no parking within 25 feet on both sides of crosswalk.
This is something I started when I was still in council, so. Trenton House Hospital has the parking lot across the street for employees, so, you okay with this?
Yeah.
The curb cuts were there for the crosswalk, but those little stripes on the street were not there, so it's kind of a dangerous situation.
Actually have a map on the back. No, that's fine.
Letter dated August 15, 2014, from Pre-Old Mirabella Liaison for the POW MIA Committee, County of Union, requesting that your honorable body designate September 19, 2014, as POW MIA Remembrance Day, accept an invitation to attend the Union County POW MIA Remembrance Day Ceremony on Friday, September 19, 2014, at 11:15 a.m. in front of the courthouse on Broad Street. In case of rain, the ceremony will be held in the rotunda. Letter dated August 8, 2014, from the City Treasurer, submitting the Treasury Report of Receipts and Disbursements for the month of June, 2014, and Statement of Bank Balances and Investments as of June 30, 2014. City Councilman, Maza has given two memorials, one for Vito Calmasano and Pascolina Parisi.
Amen.
And then we have to go into.
Hold on, before you do.
Okay. These are responses to requests that were made by Councilman Gonzalez, Sedenya, and Gorman, who's responding. Who's responding? Well, they're not, they weren't approved. Did you read them?
All of them have been denied.
No.
No.
No, not denied. Well, I was gonna wait till the once around, but if we can do it now, I'd like to do it now.
What is it?
You wanna do it now?
There's five intersections here where members of council have asked for multi-stop intersections. Cherry Street and Sayre Street. Where's that?
Oh, agree with them?
Cherry Street and Sayre Street, where's that?
That's right by Hamilton, pretty much.
What do you want to do?
I'll meet with them, I know we spoke, they were just, originally we wanted to put a stop sign there with the blinking yellow, but we wanted to change it to blinking red. One of the problems was that the cars, when they come around Hamilton, if it's a stop sign, the cars will build up and they're afraid that there's gonna be accidents from the back end. So, but definitely, I don't know if you wanna talk about the other one I have.
Hold on, we're gonna go on to that. Then we got Ogden Street and Mordor Street.
That's in the second ward, Mr. President. I had requested that traffic take a look at that, getting a lot of complaints there on Mordor Street, that's also right by the school, and a lot of speeding and concerns with the children coming and going, however, according to the recommendation by the Traffic Department, the city engineer needs to provide a certification for the four-way stop and the stop bars.
Right, it says here, this intersection falls within Title 39, 4-197J, and by statute can be stopped control.
So, I'd like to see if this engineer can provide that certification, so this way we can move forward with that.
Can we add that one up? We're gonna ask him to do it.
I think he would prefer to see the engineer.
Right, so let's send this over to the city engineer.
I mean, this is how they...
Send this over to the city engineer, let him know that he's close to a school and the councilman feels it's necessary there. And we need it under Title 39, 4-197J, we need the city engineer to support us with a certification. Okay? The next one is Alina Street and Jefferson Avenue.
Yeah, Mr. President.
This one, you and I spoke about.
Yeah, right. Now, if you read the backup letter from the engineer, and they went to the fourth paragraph, they talked about one of the stop signs was upside down long before they did the study. I had that sign up right, so that's, they could take that out of there, but notwithstanding that, they're really looking at it the wrong way, we was talking about Jefferson Avenue, 'cause Alina Street always has a stop sign.
Right.
Both going, you know, both going and coming, but Jefferson Avenue is the one that I was, we was talking about.
Right.
But they somehow, and I told Lieutenant Marcus, they got kind of crossed up, so maybe we can send it back to them and tell them, see if we can't... I know they didn't have, they said proclaim the memo, that they don't have enough for accident, for requirement.
But you had a lot of speeding happening. Remember, this is the lady we met with, and she said there was a lot of speeding.
Speed, that's correct, absolutely.
So...
That is correct. They make some recommendation in there, but I don't know if that gonna slow people down. So...
I was there at that meeting.
Correct.
So, I think that this one I'd like to put on for a three-way stop to be installed.
Like I said, 'cause on Alina, we already got the stop sign, already.
So, what we're doing is adding the...
On Jefferson Avenue, correct.
So, we're gonna put that one on. Durant Street and Cross Avenue.
Durant and Cross Avenue, that's referring to Robert Morris, 13, the dead-end street. The big problem that occurs there is that during the school year, when the kids are crossing the crosswalk, there's no stop sign to prevent the vehicles from the dead-end street to go across, and the cars don't wanna stop. So, every person, every crossing guard that's worked that corner complains that the cars coming out of the dead-end, they don't wanna stop, they don't respect premature capacity. So, that's why we wanted to put a stop sign there. And that was actually, there was two or three times police officers worked that corner, and they, they're the ones that brought it up. It would be great to have a stop sign there.
Let's put that one on.
Not going to the engineer?
No, we'll put that one on.
No, let me stop.
Let's put it on.
But it's fine, we can on. But they shouldn't stop, but they no stop sign.
Well, you need certification from him.
I understand. So, we're gonna put it on, and we're gonna ask him for a certification.
Okay.
You gonna do the same thing for Alina?
We might, we might put it on or...
We're gonna do both the same way. We're gonna put him on.
Right.
We're gonna vote on it.
Right.
And we're gonna tell the engineer he needs to now provide the certification.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If there is the case, I request a similar situation on Fourth Avenue and Johnson Street, a three-way stop.
And where's that?
And it's not on this one, but it was a few months ago back.
So, bring it up at the next pre-council meeting.
I'd be glad to, thank you.
Last one, Fifth Avenue and Atlantic. That's Councilman Torres?
That gotta be.
That's right by Montana Park.
Absolutely.
You need one?
We've had a lot of accidents here.
I think one of the guys from the housing authority got into a bad car recently. It's a difficult corner where they can actually see the upcoming traffic, so when they pull out, it's a little bit too late.
He wants people to remove their fence, I mean, that's not gonna happen. We can't tell somebody to remove their fence. That's been a problem for a while, so I'm gonna ask you to put that one on, also.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, trying to understand what we're doing, we're gonna put it on and vote on this before we get certification?
No, we're gonna put it on, vote on it, and as part of our vote, they have to provide us with a certification. Because we'll play with this forever, Frank.
No, I understand.
Somebody's been in the works.
For a while.
So, if we don't force the issue, it's gonna...
So, we put the car in.
They wanna put it on the stop sign. I understand, thanks, Mr. President.
But the reality is, Councilman, is that members of council have received a lot, rumors, complaints from residents that these things are needed, because they live there every day. So, sitting in a room and looking at numbers sometimes is not the real... Sometimes, you know what happens? Sometimes accidents occur, but they're not reported.
Correct.
Okay, so sometimes those numbers that they're looking at in this closed box, these aren't real numbers.
I was just concerned about the statutory requirement, that was only my question.
We can vote on it, obviously it won't get installed without certification, but it pushes them to hopefully remove it.
All right, and just to confirm what Councilman Groves said, when you're actually there and actually witness yourself, eyewitness yourself, in our case, where they're speeding on Jefferson Avenue, it's just...
So, that's a reason of the street.
Yeah, it's ruthless. The only way you're gonna stop it is put a stop sign on that.
I was just gonna add, it's also the close calls, it's like, you know, all the close calls we see.
Yep.
And this one here on Atlantic and Fifth Avenue, I mean, guy's, he's saying, well, let's take baby steps, let's remove, have the guy remove the fence, I mean, come on. The reality is, it's needed, and let's just get done and be over with it. I'm gonna ask the members of council who we have just agreed to put these things on to follow up with me in two weeks, just so that we can make sure that the proper steps following our approval, okay?
Mr. President, there were two others there in my ward, I don't know if you have those?
No, they were just memos.
You wanna bring them up at the next meeting? Can we bring it up at the next meeting? The once around?
Do you have them?
Bring them up at the once around. That's not in front of you.
Yeah.
They, he only sent them to...
We didn't have them.
No, he didn't send it to council.
So, two requests I've been working on. Either bring it up at the once around, or make copies for the next meeting. All right, now we're moving into closed session. Moved by Councilwoman Patricia Burgins Auguste, seconded by me.
Whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss the matter falling within the attorney-client privilege, minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting. Councilwoman Perkins Auguste?
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sodano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gorman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
We're gonna put on Fifth Avenue and Atlantic, Durant and Cross Avenue, and Alina and Jefferson, correct?
Yeah.
The other two, we're not doing that. Ogden Street and Mordor.
Yeah, that one's off, only one.
Cherry Street and Sayre are the ones we're not doing.
Right, it's gonna be held.
All right, before we go into what's around, I just wanna go over a couple of things. Tony, you said there was a list here of properties that were auctioned? No, this is all one property.
Oh, no, 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 no. But this is the list that the city wanted, that bought, that's what I thought you were...
No, no, no.
No, they haven't completed that yet.
Tony, we've been talking about this for a year now. The city owns property, we've foreclosed on it, we've paid attorneys to do imrid foreclosures. When are we gonna auction these off?
We're gonna have, reassemble the committee, the housing committee, sometime in the month of September, within the next couple of weeks, and go over the list and set up dates for the auction, the dollar amounts, estimated dollar amounts, etc.
And we get those lists as soon as the committee decides what they are?
Sure.
Because, I mean, we've been talking about this for years and years now.
Yeah, yeah, it's on...
There's revenue out there to be made.
Oh, sure.
And to have our guys going out every couple of months and cut grass on property that we own, we don't need that headache, I mean, and liabilities. So, as soon as we can get that list, please. I wanna congratulate Councilwoman Patricia Burgins Auguste and everyone else here in this room. We gave out over, what, three thousand, four thousand backpacks?
Over three thousand.
Over three thousand backpacks last Wednesday to kids throughout the City of Elizabeth, and I think these backpacks are gonna go a long way to make sure that kids have a way to transport their books and all their school supplies to and from school, so I wanna congratulate them. I also wanna congratulate Councilwoman Gorman for the great event you had over at Howland Park. I heard it was a lot of, well-attended.
Yes, Sebastian.
And I wasn't here, I was away that week, but congratulations on that. We also have a couple of things coming up. We have the African Heritage Day Parade, which is going to take place on Sunday, September 14th, at 2:00 p.m. beginning at Union Square, which is where Armonia Bank is today, so for those who wanna participate, please reach out to Chairperson Yolanda Lee Perkins, who's information is available in the City Clerk's office if anybody is interested. We also have here, Councilman Sodano, we had requested of Director Cosgrove some studies on two intersections, Sheridan Avenue and Virginia Street, and Newark Cabinet Waybuck Place, has anything been responded to that?
Yet.
Can we resend these, please, to the Director?
But after him and some, Gregor and Lieutenant Marcus and I have had conversations about it. Not yet, not from him.
Could we send these out again? I know he's been out for a while, and he's trying to catch up, but if you can ask him, these have kinda been out for a while. Also, we had asked Patrol Division to enforce the scavenger, scrappers ordinance, and they've been doing a good job, 'cause I've noticed a reduction in guys hanging out there, walking down Elizabeth Avenue with their shopping carts full of metal, so hopefully that'll get a little better. I'd love to know, Councilwoman Patricia Burgins Auguste?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
During meeting, bond ordinance?
Where is that?
Well, we had a bond ordinance on that, it was...
It was table, the last meeting. I have it here, it was table.
And they had it?
Well, they wanted...
What do you have to say about that?
City Council, the Honorable City Council, has been extended an invitation by the joint meeting to visit their facilities, a guided tour at your convenience, something that we recommend.
How about if we ask them to come here first? Since we extended it additionally?
Well, it was a mix-up today, they were supposed to come tonight, and there was a mix-up there, they had some commitments, etc. They could be at the next meeting, I would ask them if they wanna come to the regular meeting on a night.
No, that's not gonna... They have to be on the 16th, and we'll keep this on hold until they get here.
And as far as invitations?
If we decide afterwards to go and visit, we will, but in the meantime, we want them here on the 16th.
Yeah, we...
Councilman? Councilman Gonzalez?
Yeah, when we ask, what we get as a result of the money they're asking for, they said we got this capital improvement plan, but I couldn't even read it with my glasses on. So, if we can get something that's more, we can see better and understand how Elizabeth is gonna derive anything from these different projects and these timelines that they've set up, I really agree with how this benefits Elizabeth.
I didn't get that.
We all got it.
You agree this?
But we can't read it.
Yeah, it's tough to read it.
List of the updates, Mr. President. Updates from the last regular conference.
Yeah. Yeah, we're good, so when they come to the meeting, Tony, they're to bring us a little more legible...
Yeah, we'll try and get them beforehand, explore them out to maybe 11 by 7 feet, if they're free.
Well, they gotta be here on the 16th, if not, we're gonna be keeping this thing on hold.
Again, they would appreciate questions before the meeting.
It's not gonna study, they're not gonna have any credit notes or anything, they don't...
The one question we need to direct answer to is, where is this money being spent and how's it benefiting us? That's the one main, and then obviously there'll be other questions.
Yeah, put that in the email already, that's a basic question.
And we wanna be concerned as owners, because there is laws that have been passed, just like they had African American, we were slaves, that was unjust. So, laws can be, you know, laws can be changed. If we can change the Constitution of this country, surely the joint meeting can change its rules to be more fairable and equitable in the times that we're living in.
The composition of the eleven members, only four from Union County, the rest are from Essex.
Yeah, it's just a joke, only paying on...
Four of the eleven.
We've had it so far, residents, it's crazy, it's unfair.
Only Hillside, Roseville Park, Summit, and Union, they're all total.
They want, how much of our money? Twenty-five million? Uh, forty million over, down to the next few years.
A few years, few is two.
It's not two, it's over ten years.
So, Tony, send them the message, we want it on the 16th. And this will be on hold until we meet with them and feel that we are being properly represented?
Yeah, I thought about it, and they can at least give us a seat. It's unjust, and it's unfair.
You all agree?
Okay, then act like it.
Well, that's where we stand. Anybody else have any comments? Councilwoman next, go ahead.
Yeah, the point is, I've mentioned this several times in the last couple of years, we are not in a beneficial relationship with the joint meeting at all. The City Council, in conjunction with the administration, should reexamine the relationship from top to bottom, and there should be some strategic thinking about the relationship that would better serve the City of Elizabeth. That's not gonna be solved by one visit by now here. It's just not, it's a wider problem.
Well, but if we hold twenty-five million of their money, it might be solved.
If they get their attention, yes.
You're right, Joe, but it has to start somewhere, and the goal starts here.
I agree.
That's why they have to come to one, we don't wanna see a dog on pony show, we don't wanna see a facility. Right, come on.
You wanna change this.
That's frightening, that's disingenuous, to say come see our facility, huh? We don't own it, we wanna get a seat on it, we wanna have part ownership, we don't wanna look at your... We don't wanna look at your facility, you're crazy. I think that's a insult, for them to even say that to us.
I agree. Councilman, before you go on, two other things I forgot to mention. September eleventh, at eight forty-six A.M., we're gonna have the September eleventh Memorial Service at the Midtown Pedestrian Plaza, just by the train station. Anyone at home that wishes to attend, it starts at exactly eight forty-six A.M., that's when the bell will toll, and...
One thing regarding, Mr. President, I noticed that New Jersey Transit has some type of, um, radio, make the, can we find out what's going on with that? And I'm hoping that's gonna be removed, but it's been here for about two weeks now.
Portable station.
What is it?
It's a police station.
Come here. It's a crane.
Can we find out, Tony, what's going on with that?
It's right next to the...
Right at the pedestrian plaza.
Right next to the monument.
The nine-eleven monument, and the train station?
Yeah.
It's there, and it's been there for...
They had to move that, it's an ice storm.
We're gonna do our ceremony, huh?
Yeah, it's just an ice storm in general.
It's a portable station.
Portable station.
Yeah, what is it?
Oh, okay.
So, like a police lookout?
Well, I've never seen a body up there looking at that, though.
So, they are cameras, apparently.
There's no, I don't think there's cameras. It's just, it's an ice storm. A couple people have mentioned it to me.
We'd rather have cops, if that's the case. I'd rather have cops out there.
I will deal with them, I will shut the scene anyway.
But I need to, I need to put it behind, not in front of the pedestrian plaza, it's just a...
The other thing I wanna announce to the people at home, October eighteen and nineteen, we're gonna have a couple of reenactments in the city commemorating our three-hundred-fiftieth anniversary. It'll be on Sunday, the nineteenth of October, at eleven A.M., right in front of Union Square, and then on, then at two o'clock, they're going to have something in front of the Liberty Hall Museum. So, all right, Councilman, what do you think?
Thank you, Mr. President. United Way, I'd like to do a resolution identifying the Capitol Campaign season for the United Way. I think they're gonna try to have something down at the train station for the during public, around the week of the, I think, the fifteenth or the sixteenth, but I'll let everyone know. What else did I have reminding?
Yeah, was there? I never write down my notes. Okay, I'll paint. That was the only member of my college talk I remember.
Councilman Torres?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I know recently in the past, we just purchased paint from Department of Public Works several months ago, and so far, none of the crosswalks around our schools have been painted, especially in my ward, so I would like a letter to the Director that he can make sure that our crosswalks around our schools, our public schools are painted. Second, Elizabeth Avenue Partnership, can we send, gain in contact with someone or send them a letter about certain stores that need to be closed at ten o'clock? I know other stores that have an apartment building in my ward, and probably the whole city have to close it, but Elizabeth Avenue Partnership doesn't. And I know there's some stores on that, on Elizabeth Avenue, that needs to be shut at ten o'clock due to illegal activity. Third, and last, I'd just like to thank everyone who...
Before you go on.
Okay.
When you send a letter to Elizabeth Avenue Partnership, I think, maybe find out if there's any businesses that are not liquor licenses, that are open past ten.
Ten o'clock.
Find out how many, then, you. If there aren't any, then maybe they may consent to comply with our ordinance.
Like potatoes and, um, that's just the potatoes.
But there's some, there's some restaurants in there, so we need to find out if there's any businesses that are not alcohol licensed.
Okay. El Palmeri, Dale, this, the bakery.
I don't know. They're open past ten. That's what we need to find out.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilman.
And I just wanna thank everyone who showed up. I know Councilwoman Patricia Perkins, and everyone who supported one community, one fish, one family fish fry, two weeks ago. They fed over five hundred individuals. It's a group of local individuals who decided they wanted to give back to the community, so it was a great event, and I just wanna thank everyone who showed up and participated.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, Councilman?
That's it.
Councilman Keenan?
Pass.
Councilman...
I think, Mr. President, I believe, Councilman, uh... We talked about this, about for sale cars, for sale cars with signs on the street. I don't know, Councilman Gonzalez, you talked about it?
Correct, we passed an ordinance.
An ordinance on there? So, what I need from, maybe Yolanda can pull that ordinance up, I need to find out how many cars, unless you remember, we had that you could have on the street. I got a couple complaints in certain areas about these for sale cars with the signs on.
Yeah, running a used car dealership on the street.
Exactly, but I couldn't remember how many it was that we said you could have.
I don't recall exactly.
So, but if Yolanda can pull that ordinance back up, and so I can take a look at it.
Okay.
I spoke to the Police Department Lieutenant Marcus about it, and he said, "Councilman, they did give a few tickets out, but I might wanna get more." So, if you pull that out, so I can take a look at it, then I can know what direction I wanna head to there.
Wasn't there two councils, did you have?
Yes, I...
I think it's on, it's on three, something.
Once I, I like to take a look at the order first.
Okay, you had that problem.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Just before, Councilman, as before we get to you, I just wanted, I received, I don't know if anybody else received it, but I received police reports of summonses that were in fact issued regarding, just scrappers.
No, I was gonna get that.
So, in case you wanna look at.
Will they give them a fine?
There's a city ordinance. They were issued, one was ID tags requiring a shopping card, banning a shopping card in public thoroughfare, pushing a shopping cart on public right-of-way.
Did they impound with people, they don't?
Well, they got summonses, yeah, these are all fines. They show up. Looks horrible.
Mr. President, if it's possible, Mr. Papery, Westphal Avenue and Cherry Street by Hamilton, because my school started, that's the only side where kids are getting dropped off, they asked me, I was there today, actually, that painted where it began, we painted about a year and a half ago, they could do it again.
Which one?
On Westphal Avenue and Cherry, by Hamilton, on Westphal Avenue.
Crosswalks.
It's an area that the kids will be dropped off by the bus, so we don't want nobody to park there.
Oh, it's yellow zone?
Yeah. To just go back again and paint it again.
Okay.
All right? And then, somebody called me a couple days ago, some time ago, we received a letter from the Water Company, I mean, Liberty Water Company, explaining that you have to call this number, and you have to do this, and you have to do that. The letter was really, I didn't understand myself when I received mine, and it's pretending about your line that you have, with this one inch, three quarter, and one inch above. What do they have to do? Who do they have to call?
No, let me explain. Right now, we have three classes of customers. Class one is residential, it's under one inch, that's five eighths, three quarters. Class two is one inch and over. Class three is the Joint Meeting industrial customers. Class two customers, one inch and above, they have the opportunity, if they are deemed and evaluated to be strictly residential, to be dropped back to class one. If you remember, when we passed the ordinance, class one has no sewer increase for this period.
Right.
And class two has an increase of about twenty-five percent. But if they're strictly residential, they call up the City Engineer, Dan Loomis, they fill out this application, the Engineering Department will send out an inspector to check the property, see if it's strictly residential. You know, for example, we have these large apartments on North Avenue, okay, they're strictly residential, they have one inch and above meters, they qualify as residential, drop them back down to the class one, because the residential customers, again, we're trying not to get them any...
So, Councilman, I guess the bottom line is, if you're a residential customer, I mean, your house is just, no, no, no commercial, regardless of the size of your pipe, you can call, and they'll reduce your rate to residential.
Right, now, what we had, then, we sent out over a thousand letters, those customers that are one inch and above, that could be classified as residential, and they have to apply. And we also have it on our website, with those instructions, that type of thing, so, you know, we anticipate the several customers are looking into it, so.
Thank you, and I think it's a good explanation, yes, definitely, but it wasn't clear when people read.
Councilman, anything else?
Yeah, it's something new, so it's, it's gonna work itself out over the next few months.
Next.
Councilman Questa?
Yes, Mr. President, a couple of things. President, just a reminder that traditionally, we renewed the rent control ordinance in September, so I think we should take a look at it, and...
I'm glad you brought that up, because there's, there's been some issues in the last couple of months that some people have called me. It seems that the rent control says you can't raise your rent more than three percent from year to year, but there's a cap of twenty dollars. I don't remember that being part of that ordinance. And so now, you know, if you have a person who's paying a thousand dollar rent, they can't raise it thirty dollars, so you have to keep it at twenty bucks. And some of the landlords are really concerned about that. So, maybe if we can get a copy of the ordinance to everybody?
Okay.
And then we can discuss it on the next meeting. Yeah, oh, good, good.
You said no, then.
Yeah, there's definitely a cap of twenty.
I mean, I'm not here fighting for one side or the other, but, you know, if we're gonna do a three percent, it should be three percent. If that's the case, then you lower the percentage to two and a half percent.
We should just leave it alone.
I know you do.
Yeah, because I'm...
Because it's gonna just open up a bag.
All right, Mr. President.
What else, Councilman?
The second thing, Mr. President, as some of us get ready to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, I think it's important to recognize individuals who are outstanding in our community, and who, day in and day out, do great things for the city. So, I would like to ask for accommodation for four individuals, Amilcar Colom, Elizabeth Cano, Alberto Goncalves, and Orlando Galvez. Obviously, Mr. President, I could give you more, there are more individuals who deserve recognition. I am familiar with these four individuals, and I know what they do, day in and day out, and that's why I'm requesting accommodation for them.
What are the names again?
Amilcar Colom.
Okay.
Elizabeth Cano.
Okay.
Alberto Goncalves, and Orlando Galvez.
Oh, your face.
Sorry? I have a lot of friends. Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman?
That's it.
One thing you didn't mention is that we have the Ciclovia coming up.
Oh, yes, we do.
Isn't that this Saturday or Sunday?
It's Sunday, the fourteenth. It's in the morning.
Sunday, the fourteenth?
Yes.
It was supposed to be the seventh, initially.
I know.
You changed it.
I didn't. It had to be changed for various reasons. And I looked into it, and I know that's the same date of the parade, but the Ciclovia's in the daytime.
Right, it's from nine to eleven.
Nine, nine to eleven-thirty.
All right, so that's now moved to the fourteenth?
To the fourteenth, correct.
I'm glad you put it on, Mr. President, because I'm gonna have to this weekend.
That would have my mic out, too. Yeah, me, too.
I would make sure everyone here was a...
Yeah, I have a file. I'm a child, though.
All right, so, for those at home, the Ciclovia is gonna take place on the fourteenth of the waterfront at nine o'clock.
On the waterfront.
Correct?
That's right, thank you.
We have it all mapped out. Everything's mapped out, and...
You've got publication.
Anything else, Councilman?
That's it, thank you.
Councilman's thing, good.
But can we add more people to your list? Can we add more people to your list?
Well, we can have more people to this list. These four individuals are recommended, if anyone has any other...
Would you mind bringing those up for the next meeting?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you.
There's so many people.
At our last regular conference, I requested the place to hold, I request to vacate a portion of Brighton Street, which is between Pulaski Street and Cold Place, because they're gonna build a school there. I didn't know anything about it, but as I looked into it, Brighton Street only exists on paper, that's why I never knew about this street. So, I don't have a problem with the vacating, but from what I understand is, they're gonna build this school, and again, it's another school, and I'm concerned, and the neighbors over there are concerned, because there's gonna be no parking attached to that. They're building it next to the Upper Academy, and there's gonna be no parking again for the school that's being built, and, you know, that's, that's a concern, so.
Do they have to go before the lines were, or is that what it was?
No.
So, the School Development Authority...
I had the same problem with school twenty-one, they put up this massive building with no parking.
Yes, it does poor count.
I guess the, I guess the only thing you can do, Councilman, is send a letter to the State Construction Authority, whether it's State Schools...
Call the state legislators and have them...
Development Authority or something.
Let the state legislators do it for you. Call them, tell them, say, "We need one parking, immediate demands..."
You think they have to spend more money building these schools? They should have some underground parking or something.
Something, they should have.
Because the teachers are, then they, then they're gonna coy, because this happens over at school one.
Then the teachers don't come up here and take...
Complaining that the cops are ticketing them because they're...
You're gonna have two schools there.
It makes a huge difference, like, even the school more sad to have the underground parking.
It's a huge difference, right? See, they did it for that community, because they know that community is conscious and aware.
So, if we can do something like that, maybe they send a letter to our legislators, or send...
Yolanda, why don't you work with your assistant? Councilman Gonzalez, and put me the letter together.
Appreciate that.
Mr. President, also, at our last conference, I talked about the speed hubs, and we talked about sending a letter to the Newark Public Works Director, to see how that's being implemented over there, how's it going? Did we ever do that?
First, it took me a while to find out who the Public Works Director is. Because he's not labeled as the Public Works Director. I found him, and I did send the letter out. Yeah, so I'm waiting to hear.
Can we, can we get a copy and follow up, maybe?
Yeah.
Have Grayson somebody call over?
Mister Mohammedesh, yeah. He's an engineer, not a public works director.
He's not a public works director.
That's what he handles, he's an engineer.
Also, at our last conference meeting, I asked about the master plan, have we gotten, did anything go out with regard to that? Have we gotten a response?
Bridgette, I sent a letter.
Can we follow up with Bridgette? Can we follow up with Bridget? Let's get an answer, because that was a month ago?
I didn't see a letter or anything. I wasn't sure.
Well, it's probably still downstairs. Okay.
And I'd like to follow up with another letter to the post office, the postmaster. We sent the letter some time ago, because on the corner of South Broad and Summer Street, we had a big fire where, it's like the church where, when it was at, and all those businesses were torn down. Well, neighbors are telling me that there was a post office box there on that corner, and that after the fire, they took it out, and they haven't replaced it. So, I wrote, but I'd like the letter to reflect specifically that there had been one there, and the neighbors are asking if they're going to replace it and put it back. I mean, they knocked down all the buildings and everything, but they want to know if it's.
That's the postmaster, Carmen, Carmen.
Dennis, a lot.
Dennis over.
I just wanted to add, I know that he's taken the stance that whenever there's one that's knocked down with a car accident or stuff, they're not looking to replace it.
They're really, he's really against stolen.
Yeah.
But I agree with the Councilman. This was something that was there in the past.
And it was because of the fire that the residents are saying that they took it out, so. And the other, last two things I have, Mr. President, it's been about a year and a half, maybe two years now, that I've been advocating for placing left turn phasing signals over on the corners of Edgar Road and South Elmore Avenue, as well as Rowway Avenue, Elmore Avenue. Traffic Department initially wrote to the Department of Transportation, wrote back to us and said we have to absorb cost associated with that. Didn't give us a figure. So, then we had our traffic engineers take a look at it. They've come up with figures. They've come up with the DOT policy, and given a breakdown of that cost. And to do both of these, it's going to be approximately forty thousand dollars.
Forty?
Forty. Forty thousand, right. So, I want to see first if we could identify where we can get the money from, so we can do it. And then, what we would need is a resolution, so that then we can send the resolution along with a letter to DOT.
Tony, we got some rent money, we applied for rent money to improve certain intersections, I think Elizabeth Avenue and Bridge Street. And we also, I think, identified West Jersey and Broad Street. I think there are East Jersey and Broad Street.
There are Jefferson.
Yeah. Maybe there might be an extra forty grand at the end of the day that we could allocate to get this thing done also. I mean, it's part of the whole concept of improving intersection.
That's Edgar and what other ones? Edgar Road?
Yeah, Edgar Road and South Elmore Avenue.
Yeah.
Rowway Avenue and Elmore Avenue. And like I said, T N M, they provided the policy, the breakdown, the cost breakdown, and what our share would be.
Could you get that information to Tony?
Sure.
Absolutely.
No, that's, Mr. President, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think we're done. Nice to see everybody back. Bye-bye. Have a good week.